Let's call the November 15, 2023 meeting the Hinsdale Zoning Board of Appeals to order. Rob Rolcall?
Member Moberly?
Here.
Member O'Brien?
Here.
Member Giltner?
Here.
Member Murphy?
Here.
Member Lee?
Here.
Member Podliska?
Here.
Chairman Neiman?
Here. So I've been asked yet again to lead a statement encouraging people to donate to the memorial building campaign. To date, the village has received over $50,000 in donations from our families, residents, and local businesses for the 150th Memorial Building Campaign, which is terrific. Staff and board members are finalizing the plaza project details and plans. The village's goal is to break ground first thing in the spring. As we approach the holiday season, we're reminded that the village lawn and the memorial building serve as the centerpiece of Hinsdale and is used for many purposes, including Christmas Walk and Christmas Lighting, which is December 1 at 5:00 p.m. This space touches all Hinsdale residents, families, businesses, commissioners, and board members. Please join the village and be part of this project. More information is available on the village's website. All donations are tax deductible. End of commercial. First, the next matter on our agenda is approval of the October 18, 2023 minutes. Any edits, corrections, additions to those minutes? Even John has none?
No, I do not.
Oh, my. That worries me, but okay. Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
So moved to approve.
Much to approve.
Second.
Rolcall.
Sure. Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Giltner?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes. We have no approval of any final decisions or findings of that. For appearances, is everyone in the audience here on one of the cases up for prehearing or hearing? Yes, okay. So if you could all stand up and Kathy, if you could administer the oath, please.
Do each of you just want to swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, though, true, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Next matter on the agenda is receipt of requests, motions, pleadings, or requests to make public comment of a general nature, because everyone's here on one of the two cases up for prehearing or public hearing. I assume there are no such requests of a general nature. So we'll move to the prehearing and agenda setting section of the meeting. The case that's up for prehearing is case V-04-23, 24 East 8th Street.
Hi, my name's Jenna Edelmeier. I'm with Michael Abraham Architecture. We are the architect that represents the homeowner. This is Michael Whalen. They live at 24 East 8th Street. I'm sure you saw that our packet, but a brief rundown is that we are looking for an interior side yard setback relief for a little bit short of four feet. We are looking to bring it down to six foot one versus the required in the R2 as 10 feet. A little bit about the property itself, it is a very tiny lot for an R2 on that side of the south of the tracks, I guess you could say. It's one of the fourth smallest lots in that specific area of R2. And so it kind of really limits what's allowed compared to its neighbors. It's more of a R4-sized lot. And so we're trying to keep up with the community, keep up with the neighbors, but also keep the characteristics of this historic home. We are a part of the Historic Overlay District, which is a new district within the community. So we already have some setback relief. We are asking for a slight bit more of relief. And that being said, we're trying to not step past what is allowed in an R4 district. That's why we're only asking to go to a six-foot setback. We're not asking for any more than a lot this size would have. We have already gone forward and done our historic preservation presentation. They had really positive things to say.
That was to the plan commission?
I'm sorry?
That was to the plan commission.
The, yes.
Historic Preservation Commission.
Commission. Sorry, Historic Preservation Commission. Yes, we did September, right?
Yes.
And so they had really positive feedback. So I say that because this is a multi-step process here. We didn't want to come to you and ask for this if the Historic Preservation Commission was not on board. And with their positive reinforcement, we are here today.
So let me interrupt you just for a moment.
Of course.
This is the first variance application that we've seen involving the Historic Overlay District. And Rob, could you give us a maybe three-minute tutorial on the goals of the district?
Sure. So if you, if you hearken back to the Zoom days of the pandemic and a, an initiative by the HPC at that time in response to some pretty significant homes coming down in Robbins, there was talk of a cooling period on teardowns, to which we had three nights of public comment that we had to read into the record because of the public hearing requirements under Zoom. The community responded very clearly that they were not supportive of a cooling period on, on demolitions. So the, the conversation of carrots and sticks came up with the board. And what the board had hoped to do was find a way to incentivize people to maintain these older homes rather than just scrape them because it was easier. So we had a really good dialogue with the, with our regulars in town, the brokers, the builders, the architects that do a lot of work in town. And we said, look, guys, what's it going to take to move the needle? What's it going to take to maybe save some of these houses rather than taking them down? So we came up with a palette of incentives, for lack of a better way of putting it, including reduced, you know, relaxed bulk zoning standards, fee waivers for permitting, expedited reviews, a matching grant program, and a rebate on the local portion of the tax bill. And I'm, I'm happy to report that as of next week at the board, I think we're going to have 80 properties so far on this overlay district, Significant Structures List. And once you're eligible, once you're on this list, you can take advantage of some of these incentives. We've had really, really good success with it so far. We've had our, we've issued our, either first or, we've either had one or two permits that we've actually issued so far. The other, the other piece of this was some of the feedback we got from the building community was create an environment where people are clamoring to get on a list rather than off it, which resonated. Create an environment where you can get more with the old construction than you can with new construction, which also resonated. So it was with help from, you know, people like, you know, Mike Abraham, that we were able to kind of come up with what we thought was a pretty good program. And based on the fact that Bethany's on the phone with people every day for probably an hour plus talking up this program, I think it's been hugely successful so far. So this is the first time that you're seeing, normally when you guys see a request, it's to 3110, right? The bulk zoning regs in 3110, which is your general single-family zoning district. These are in the overlay section of the code. So it's a different, it's a different code section. And if there was any confusion, that may be why. But we did confirm with the village attorney that the relief that was being requested should be to those bulk regs in the overlay district rather than the bulk regs in 3110.
Rob, question. Tell me if this has come up before. We do things like fee waivers and reduction of taxes and all that. Sort of everybody in the village is contributing to that. There are 17,000 people in the, so that's, I'm okay with that part. When we relax the zoning standards, then a lot of the burden's falling on, and I'm not saying it's in this case, the next door neighbor or the people across the street, the immediate neighbors sort of pay a price when we relax the zoning standards. Or maybe there's something I'm not understanding, but it seemed a little bit, how, was there a conversation about that in effect on the next door neighbor?
Yes.
When we put up a giant house or a giant addition? Because I've seen that a couple of times where it's been a giant addition.
There were specific requirements for that.
Okay.
That was done as part of a public hearing process at both the HPC and the board when these properties became eligible to be included on this overlay.
So this document reflects like all the input, pro and con of relaxing the code?
Correct.
Okay. We say, no, one thing I, we say maximum height, the non-applicable. What, I'm missing the concept.
You have to hold the principal ridge. So if, if this is an addition, the, the, I guess the overarching intent of the program was to afford people the ability to put a, put an addition on the, on the house.
Okay.
Right? So that ridge is already set.
Okay.
So you're not going higher than your principal ridge.
Okay, so.
And I think more importantly, the HPC has to approve any of these projects before they're, before they even come in for, well, they could probably come in for permit, right? Because we want to make sure that they are in a position to, to get a permit, that they're, that they're code compliant by the time they go to the HPC. So they are kind of the provers to make sure that the, the additions are being tastefully done, that they're sympathetic to the house, and that they fit in a context of the streets game.
Okay. So the maximum, the most, usually the maximum height is 35 feet. Is that right? Are there any houses that are higher than that, that were built a long time ago, or?
Probably.
Okay. But, so the house is 37 feet, the addition can be 37.
You'd have to hold the principal ridge, right? That existing ridge.
Okay. I, I got you. It's, okay, I'll stop. I just, I had some theoretical, I saw this being debated and I couldn't watch all the Zoom calls. I just kind of wanted a little more information on, especially, and we're, I don't think this is a huge, we may find out tonight, impact to neighbors, but there may be one in the future that's impacts to neighbors. And people love to sue in Hinsdale, so I just want to try to find out about that.
I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're doing something that the Historic Overlay Code wouldn't permit, then they have to come here, and the neighbors would then have an opportunity to come here and say, don't do it. I, so we'll cross that ridge when we come to it.
Yeah, I understand. I just had some, just questions on the overall.
Sure.
I'll stop. You guys.
No.
Okay. Don't want to speed up, turn. Why don't you tell us about exactly what you're doing, where, on the property? I mean, we all read it, but give us a quick overview of that.
Sure. So you will see there is a comparison zoning site plan. We did the, what the original zoning codes for this R2 district, if we went under the normal 3, 310?
Yep.
Bulk zoning regulations. Then we show you what would happen under the new HOD regulations. So you can see how much we are actually benefiting from this program. It is, it is a huge deal, and we don't want to discredit that at all because it's been
Yeah, it's been a huge.
Really, really helpful. But in, in studying how to best add to this home, we could have filled the entire, now what we get as our rear yard, because we have gone from 50 feet now down to 25 feet, we could now use that whole space long, you know, east to west, and then, you know, to the, right up to that 25-foot setback. We chose not to do that because it really, it's a really, like disrespectful almost to the home. The home would have no yard. They have three children. You know, there would be no natural light getting to the center core of that house if we come back that deep and make the house that deep. We're trying to respect the enjoyable space. We're not asking for more than we need. So we're coming off the side to a room that actually already exists, a sunroom that is there, that is falling apart as we speak, but it is there. So we are looking to make it slightly larger and more functional because right now on the interior square footage, I think it's only seven feet, seven and a half feet wide. So getting furniture in there is actually quite narrow. And so it's not really a good room to put furniture inside of. So we are looking to create a sitting room on the first floor and then update the second floor and add a master, a primary bathroom. And so that there could be then three bathrooms on the second floor versus two. That is where the variance portion is coming in. We are doing a small addition off the rear of the house to cater to some of the kitchen needs, but that does not fall under our current variance request. We, we get that relief from the HOD bulk relief. So I just, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there, there's a little bit of irony because the, the relief in the rear yard was incredibly helpful, especially for our kitchen. We have a little galley kitchen. It's an older home. It was built in either the 20s or the 30s. It's not entirely clear. But with respect to the side yard, the sunroom that exists now more or less lines up with our neighbor's garage. And so actually to build into the HOD area in the back, it would almost be more obtrusive, you know, take up our backyard. So for us, we just wanted to maintain the look of the house. Obviously, that second floor isn't there. It was originally, I think it was originally a patio. Prior owners in like the 70s told us they three-seasoned it, and then someone tried to four-season it. I wouldn't go out there in the winter. I don't go out there in the winter. But we want to keep that look. It's, it doesn't look great now. We want to keep it in keeping with the house. And Jenna's done a great job with that. You can see the elevations on the sheet.
There are elevations in the packet, I believe. Yeah.
So if we went, if we went back, we could get more space, but we'd still have the, you know, seven feet in there where you could touch both walls, and you couldn't put anything in there anyway. So we figured if we just ask, ask for four more feet, then we don't have to go into the backyard. Understood?
Any of the board members have any questions at this point?
I was just going to ask. So the variance is being requested on, on, I'm looking at this diagram. I'm not clear if it's.
The west.
On the west side.
West side.
And I know part of the process is you notify neighbors. Have you had conversations with this neighbor on that side?
We have, and they like the plans. I don't know if it's because they don't have to stare at our current sunroom any longer, or if they're happy for us, or some combination of the two. But they were supportive. I don't know if they'll speak in support. They may show up and hate it next month. I don't know. But they've been supportive so far, and they've been incredibly nice about the whole process, so.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
How close is their structure to that lot line?
It's, I think, I would guess it's almost exactly 10 feet because they have a driveway that comes down that side. I think, Jenny, you'd probably.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if I want to admit this, but we did the home next door so in, I want to say 2014. So my guess is that it's to whatever the current interior side yard setback is on that side. I don't know if it's 10 feet or 12 feet that would be on that side, but I could, I could find that out.
Yeah. I was looking at the schematic. I couldn't quite see if there was a measurement there or not, but maybe there is.
For, for our lot or for their garage?
For theirs.
Yeah. So I could, I can locate that for next, for next time.
Yeah, I wish there were, I wish there were pictures. I guess it's not part of it, but it actually sits together quite nicely because it is their front garage and it's almost the exact length of the sunroom. So it's not a consistently usable space. There's, you know, it's a single-story garage, so they kind of sit against each other. And it's really their ingress because then they have a side door to the back. And it's not until you get deep into our backyard that they have a kitchen window, so.
Just so you know, some of us have a habit in cases that we're curious about of actually driving by themselves, taking a look.
You're, you're welcome. We don't have a dog. You're welcome on the property to check it out.
I am going to make that note.
Any other questions from the board members? Okay.
I have one question.
Please.
Any reason why you're not going over the addition in the back and putting the second floor stuff over there?
Yes.
We, we talked about that at one point.
Yeah, we've, we talked about it e, either as an or or an and. The, if you look at the second floor, let's see if I can find the floor plan here. Yeah, I guess any one of these words, ideally, I would find the one, oh, yeah. So if you look, you go up the stairs towards the south from the foyer, and then just to the left there, yeah, I'm with me, first floor. Just to the left there, that's one of our kids' bedrooms. And it, it doesn't really, I guess there's the possibility of putting more stuff back there, but it would loom very large in the backyard. It would sort of come up very high. And then you would lose one of the natural windows, because if you look, the other existing window is tucked over in the corner of that room because the breezeway is towards the middle of the wall. So all told, it just didn't seem like the best solution. The primary bedroom was already in the northwest of the house. So we felt that it was more natural to put it up there. And we kind of like having it up there because it keeps that back bedroom with that hall bathroom. So it was something we thought about, but standing in our backyard, which is very small, as Jenna said at the beginning, the thought of having a two, you know, two stories coming back even farther seemed like a lot. And then, probably can't tell it, maybe you can from the rear elevation, but the, the ridge line goes east to west, but then it comes back. There's a gabled roof above that bedroom, so it gets even more structure up there. It's not like it's a sloped roof in the backyard. So if we would even match that, then it gets very high. It's basically two and a half stories of structure. So it's certainly something we explored, but didn't seem like the right, the right solution for us.
Any other questions? Okay, so I thought that your explanation of why you met the criteria for the variance was, I thought it read well, and you actually addressed the issues, which is a good thing. So when you come back next month, be prepared to take us quickly through why you meet each of the seven criteria, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Next matter on our agenda is the public hearing in case V-03-23, 110-100 East Maple.
Hello. Nice to see you all again. Good to see you. My name's Abby Marfert. My husband, Adam, and our daughter AJ is in the back row. We live at 110 East Maple Street and also own 106, the lot next door. We also have Stephanie and Brian, who own 100 East Maple Street. So they are our neighbors to the west. So we're here to request approval on variations we're seeking for 100 East Maple and 110 East Maple Street in relation to the re-subdivision of the properties. To provide a quick refresh on the background for you, in May of 2022, we purchased 106 East Maple Street. When we purchased the property, we were made aware of an easement that was on the current property for use of the driveway and the garage to our neighbors at 100 East Maple Street. This past summer, we demolished the home at 106 East Maple and have plans to add an addition to our current home at 110, which requires us to consolidate the lots. In addition, we want to vacate the easement, which has been in place since the 70s, subdividing a portion of the lot, the driveway, the garage, and a few extra feet of width to our neighbors at 100 East Maple Street. We submitted the plat of re-subdivision and the application to the village for review, which raised the issues around existing non-conforming conditions with current zoning requirements on both properties, 110 and 100. We weren't aware of the issues when purchasing the property or demolishing the property. At the time, the sort of dominoes just sort of fell as we went through this process, which is why we're here today. For 100 East Maple Street, we are seeking two variations, a reduction of eight feet of the 18 feet required within the re-subdivision for the corner side yard, and a reduction of 3.7 feet to the east interior side yard of the seven feet required with the re-subdivision. And for 110 East Maple, we're seeking one variation, a reduction of 4.92 And for 110 East Maple, we're seeking one variation, a reduction of 4.92 feet of the east interior side yard of the 10 feet required with the re-subdivision. So, in closing, we're seeking relief for both lots. We're getting them closer to conforming under the current code requirements by making them both larger properties. As you've probably driven by, our homes are on small lots currently. And as a result of the re-subdivision, we're also making the area less dense versus more dense, which I think was a, a good thing. Even with the demolition of the home and it being a current vacant lot, our neighbors have been extremely supportive. And I said last time, I got a hug from one of them. So, just hoping for your support in approving the variations to move forward with the re-subdivision and consolidation of the lots. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? We, perhaps it would be good if you went through quickly summarizing the reasons why you meet the standards for the variations. That's on page K, the last two pages of your submission.
So, as for existing, it's for our garage, our detached garages, which are currently there, they exist. So, we need, they've always been non-conforming, which I think is the issue to current zoning requirements. So, as we went through the plat of re-subdivision, it was just highlighted to us that they're, they're non-conforming to current zoning requirements. So, it's existing structures that we need the relief for.
Okay. So, I've been through the explanation for why the petitioner meets the standards for variation. Does anyone have any questions about whether this petition meets those standards? Gary? Anybody? Okay. Perhaps you could take us quickly through the actual standards that are for variation and the explanation, why you, just for, for purposes of the record, why you need the standards A through G. And I, you don't need to read verbatim what's already here, we read it. Perhaps just a quick summary for purposes of the record.
Okay. Let me make sure I have that page.
Here, I'll give you.
Do you mind if I, I just, I'm like, ah, I have all these papers here?
I thought I might have caught you on the pair.
Perfect, thank you so much. So, as it relates to items A through G on the standards, one of them is related to unique physical conditions. Both of our homes were built in the 30s, so as zoning requirements have changed over the years, they've never been reviewed by a zoning board as part of any re-subdivision process. So, you know, they're on small lots currently, so it's just difficult in meeting the zoning requirements today. You know, not self-created, we certainly did not, are trying not to create any issues here. We purchased 106 East Maple in the hope that we could put an addition on, create a bigger yard, and, you know, stay in the village and also do something that we both inherited, both our neighbor and ourselves, related to the easement. The substantial rights, let me just, this here. You know, already in possession of the homes. So, and again, wishing enough space to add an addition for our family and for Brian and Stephanie to have possession and title of their drive, the driveway and garage that they currently use. The special privilege, we're, we're honestly trying to maintain the home. It's, we think it has unique characteristics and we'd love to keep it and increase the size of our lot and get it closer to conforming standards. And then, let's see here. And code and plan purposes, we'll continue to use them for residential purposes. We live at 110 East Maple Street, we have great neighbors there. And they're not, none of these variations would be detrimental to the public in any way or our neighbors. As I've said, they've been extremely supportive and are very happy for us, so.
Good. Okay. That was helpful. So, any other questions on the board? All right. So, the next step is to, I guess, to move to close the public hearing on this petition and then we'll discuss it and take a vote. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Giltner?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes. Okay.
So, I, I'll, I rarely start the discussion on these, but I'll start this one because I think this is an easy one. The petition involves an attempt to make a lot less dense rather than more dense. I wish we had many more such variance requests because our jobs would be much easier. This is, in my view, a case where less is truly more. I think they meet the standards, all of the standards for the variance, and I would vote to approve.
I agree. I think the key to this is they're not moving the houses, it's simply by enlarging the lot, which we seek to encourage, they have walked into additional requirements. And it makes sense to, if we're going to continue to encourage more space rather than less, that we should approve of something like this, where all they're asking is to not be held to new restrictions when they're not even changing the property itself, the building itself.
I agree.
I understand why it's the case, but it does seem anomalous when you make your lot bigger that you have. I say, I understand why it's the case, but it does seem anomalous when you make the lot bigger, that you have to set it back farther, I mean, it's already there and now you've got more space, but it changes your, your setbacks. And to me, that, this is a perfect example for a variance to keep that from getting in the way.
Listen?
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I think there's a reason why we listen to these on a case-by-case basis. And you guys have a very good case for what you want to do here and you're, you know, you're doing things that make sense. And we certainly appreciate that, so.
I concur. Just be careful when you're putting addition on because we have two cases of houses falling down during the addition process. So, be, be careful, make a good, make sure you get a good contractor. But you've got a really cute house now, it's a really nice block, so just, best of luck to you.
Yep, obviously, completely agree. You know, the variances saw are definitely appropriate with, with what you're attempting to do to make it less dense. And I don't see any issue with the package you've, you've put together, so.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the variance requests in case V-03-23, 110-100 East Maple?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Giltner?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes.
And Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I think that the applicant has intentions of taking advantage of the overlay program as well.
Oh, should we discuss?
I'm happy to report, if, if you'd like.
I don't have a lot, we've talked to Bethany.
Could you step up and just so the four people watching on TV?
So, we have spoken to Bethany a little bit about the historic overlay district. It provided photos and different things about, I think it was deemed a significant property back when there was something that was done in the village.
One of the surveys.
One of the surveys. Or potentially significant. So, we've been working with Bethany, I think there's just been a lot happening as it relates to consolidating the lots and moving things forward. So, we're just taking things one step at a time, but we hope to, to move that along and get to be part of the district as well, so.
Thank you. Okay. So, we approve that, any new business? Any old business? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Moberly?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Giltner?
Yes.
Member Murphy?
Yes.
Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Podliska?
Yes.
Chairman Neiman?
Yes. Thanks, everybody, congratulations.